Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the May 20th, 2020, regular school committee meeting at 6:02 PM. As a preliminary matter, my name is Keith Sullivan, and I am the chairman of the Tuxbury School Committee. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present can hear me and give consent to being recorded tonight. Members, as I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Scott Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. John Stadman.
Aye.
Mr. Jamie Cutlass.
Yes.
Mrs. Shannon Demos.
Yes.
Will the following staff members please respond in the affirmative as well? Superintendent Chris Malone.
Yes.
Assistant Superintendent Brenda Regan.
Yes.
And our business manager, Mr. David Libby.
Yes.
Also joining us tonight are some very special guests that we would like to confirm as well as possible speakers. We have the principal of Tuxbury Memorial High School, Kristin Vogel.
Yes.
A valedictorian, Tori Schill.
Yes.
And our class marshal, Lizzie Taggart.
Yes.
Thank you very much all for joining us this evening. This open meeting of the Tuxbury School Committee is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment to participate. You can call into 978-771-0819. Once again, that number is 978-771-0819. For this meeting, the Tuxbury Public School is convening by WebEx as posted on the town's website, which identifies how the public may join. View live through televised cable channels Comcast Channel 22 and Verizon Channel 34, or at www.youtube.com/tuxburytv. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and aired live, and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that people may be able to see you, and that you take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website, or can be provided by request to Secretary Gail Johnson at GJohnson@tuxbury.k12.ma.us. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless otherwise noted. We are now going to, before we, I'm sorry, turn to the first agenda item, please allow me to permit the ground rules that we will be using covering this virtual meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes, and if anyone has a comment or question, it can be submitted in the chat window and will be recognized by myself. When appropriate, you will be unmuted and asked to speak. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in dialogue with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourselves. For items during citizens forum, I will first ask members of the public who call in to speak and identify themselves by name and address. They will then be afforded the opportunity to speak to any current or previous agenda item. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. All right. And the final announcement, the May 20th, 2020 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Due to the recent open meeting law policy set by the governor during the current state of emergency, the meeting will be held as a virtual meeting. To participate, once again, you can call in at 978-771-0819, and view live through televised cable channels, that's Comcast Channel 22, or Verizon Channel 34, or www.youtube.com/tuxburytv. At this time, I would now like to turn the floor over for hopefully a very wonderful night of acknowledgement for our great students at Tuxbury High School, so I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly is a very outstanding evening we're looking forward to, and also a very unusual night. Certainly, we're here to honor several students from the class of 2020, some outstanding academic excellence in this group. Typically, we would look at a multitude of ways to honor these students, and we have done much of that virtually. After talking with the school committee chair and the school committee, it was very important for the school committee that we additionally honor these students as part of a regular school committee meeting, which has not been done before. So in response to some of the challenges of COVID-19, I certainly tip my hat to the school committee, who has gone above and beyond to make sure that we're acknowledging the outstanding academic accomplishments of our students who are graduating this year, and really celebrate their successes on multiple levels. Although these celebrations are virtual, they're no less meaningful, and certainly the fact that the school committee has decided to alter their operations entirely to bring these students forward during a school committee meeting is certainly signifies that. We have multiple categories that we would like to acknowledge tonight. National Honor Society seniors, cum laude graduates, magna cum laude graduates, summa cum laude graduates, top ranking 5% academic excellence students, and finally, the class marshal, salutatorian, and valedictorian. Once again, these are just outstanding examples of the students here in Tuxbury, the graduating class of 2020, and we're very happy to celebrate them. I'd like to start a little bit with a message from the Tuxbury Teachers Association in regards to the students that we're honoring this evening.
Hello, to those of you who do not know me, I am Teresa Enos, secretary of the TTA, and on behalf of all of the Tuxbury teachers, we would like to congratulate the graduates of Tuxbury's class of 2020, especially the National Honor Society and Top 5%, which is filled with some of the brightest minds our community has to offer. We are extremely proud of your hard work and dedication. And to the top three students, Victoria Schillie, Megan Cunningham, Lizzie Taggart. This is not where your intelligence peaks or plateaus, but rather, it is the point from which you will skyrocket. We know this isn't the ending of your high school experience that you had envisioned, but you all still have adventurous futures ahead of you. You will have lives filled with success because you are ready. Now go out in the world and shine.
Brian, I'm not sure we're getting any volume on that message. No, that's okay, Brian. I can sum up from Ms. Enos, who is the secretary of the Tuxbury Teachers Association, an example of one of our great teachers here in Tuxbury, and on behalf of the entire Tuxbury Teachers Association, she was certainly congratulating all of the recipients from this year's academic awards and seniors, and congratulating them all on the great work they have done. And I can't tell you how heartfelt that is, coming from the teachers in the district who have watched all of the students who were in the class of 2020 grow, do well, and although there's a bit of sadness to watch them move on, I think the TTA certainly agrees and congratulates those students and wishes them well. For the first group of students that we're going to specifically honor tonight, it's my privilege to bring up the class of 2020 National Honor Society seniors. To be eligible for National Honor Society, which is a national level honor, students are judged on four different levels. Scholarship, they must have a grade point average of 3.5 or higher. Character, leadership, and service. And certainly, these are key elements that we look for in all students, and when we have a large group like this at Tuxbury High School who are graduating as seniors who have made the requirements of National Honor Society, it makes us very proud. The National Honor Society ceremony is one of the highlights of the year. Students are typically inducted in their junior year. We have three members of the class of 2020 who are inducted this year. Total of 66 students in National Honor Society that we couldn't be more proud of, and although some of the pieces of in-person celebration that goes along with that ceremony could not happen, we want to make sure we honor those students for their dedication, for not only their achievement in the National Honor Society, but for their career at Tuxbury Memorial High School, and for their career in Tuxbury Public Schools. They're terrific representatives of our student body, and the elements that they are judged on to make this requirement are significant, and once again, we couldn't be prouder. So, a list of those students from the National Honor Society, the class of 2020. Amaya Allen. Shane Elwood. Thomas Baranelli. Mitt Bellani. Sarah Boucher. Bryson Boudreaux. Matthew Brennan. Colby Brown. Emily Butler. Julia Cafferty. Rebecca Cardia. Angelina Carew. Diego Carnero Montero. Connor Charron. Alexia Chesbrough. Erin Champa. Shannon Crowley. Sydney Crowley. Megan Cunningham. Rebecca DeFrancesco. Tyler Demers. Emma Demos. Gianna DiGiorgio. Anthony DeSanto. Michaela Enax. Sophia Sophie Eskenas. Matthew Ferrara. Caitlin Fiori. Michael Fowler. Julia Garland. Marissa Hines. Caitlin Hickey. Michael Kelleher. Garrett Kingston. Andrew LaPierre. Rhiannon Leslie. Kate Lowry. Faith Mazapika. Aria Marabani. Kyle Morris. Christopher Nguyen. Jacob Nordstrom. Megan Postertag. Lexi Palmasano. Campbell Pierce. Sarah Palomino. Ryan Quinn. Gianna Ragucci. Ariana Rezo. Caitlin Rose. Victoria Schill. Kyle Skrock. Gregory Sanzabar. Jessica Smith. Christina Spezafaro. Zachary Spiegel. Garrett Starr. Caitlin Staskowicz. Casey Stevenson. Rachel Strangie. Elizabeth Taggart. Kylie Tibbetts. Allison Wild. Jasmine Wan. And Morgan Woodman. Once again, outstanding effort by all of those students in the class of 2020 as part of the National Honor Society. Congratulations, students. You're great representatives of the town of Tuxbury, you're great representatives of Tuxbury Memorial High School, and congratulations. With that, I'll hand it over to Assistant Superintendent Ms. Regan.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. And Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, this is truly an exciting night for all of us at the Tuxbury Public Schools. We realize that school serves a lot of functions for our students. It's where they get to see their friends, play their favorite sport, participate in an activity or a club that they're passionate about, but we know that first and foremost, it's an academic institution. Therefore, we are all so proud of our students that seek to take the most challenging courses and persevere through them. They commit their time and efforts to achieve good grades at school and be highly contributing members of their classes. We know it's not always easy, but when the going got tough, you were tougher. So thank you to all of you and to your parents for instilling that sense of worth ethic in you. So tonight, we celebrate you. Mr. Chairman, it's my pleasure to present to you the class of 2020, students who have earned academic excellence.
Ms. Regan, just before you start, I did miss one student.
Okay.
I apologize. Rebecca Deck. Sorry, I missed one student in my list. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Congratulations, Rebecca. Now, our class of 2020 cum laude recognized students, these are students who have earned an overall grade point average of 3.6 to 3.8. I'd like to just put that in perspective for everybody who's watching. That is an average of all four years of high school of B+ or better. The students earning cum laude recognition are William Andella, Riley Offe, Danielle Bain, Dominic Byrd, Joseph Branchard, Liam Cafferty, Brian Carter, Robert Chisholm, Shayna Crowley, Rebecca DeAndre, Julia Devlin, Jared Doyle, Noah Fleming, Caitlin Frontaine, Samantha Galante, Owen Gilligan, Alexa Harrington, Zachary Hines, Madison Ittri, Robert Kimtis, Alex Lacerda, Richard Mockworth, Kyle Palomo, Lydia Pendleton, Alexis Talavera, Brody Terrell, Adam Trudeau, and Caitlin Wall. Congratulations, cum laude graduates. The next group of students that we'd like to honor and recognize tonight are students who earned the designation of magna cum laude. These students earned a grade point average of 3.81 to 4.0 over their four years of high school. Again, to put that in perspective, a 4.0 is an A average in our college preparatory courses or advanced coursework, so an average of 3.81 through 4.0 for their total four years. Students earning magna cum laude are Shane Elwood, Thomas Barbady, Andrew Bilekki, Sarah Boucher, Alex Boudreaux, Matthew Brennan, Julia Cafferty, Rebecca Cardia, Lindsay Kokanos, Melanie Crepeau, Emma Demos, Anthony DeSanto, Emily Estvez-Halario, Idalis Fernandez, Matthew Ferrera, Caitlin Fiori, Michael Fowler, Julia Garland, Harrison Grasek, Marissa Hines, Caitlin Hickey, Garrett Kingston, James Kachakian, Jessica Lusecki, Faith Mazapika, Aria Marabani, Kyle Morris, Jacob Nordstrom, John O'Neil, Lexi Palmasano, Victoria Post, Ryan Quinn, Caitlin Rose, Kyle Skrup, Gregory Sanzabar, Nicole Stevens, Casey Stevenson, Richard Strangie, Ian Tacy, Kylie Texara-Arujo, Gustavo Tizadi, and Allison Wild. Congratulations, class of 2020, magna cum laude students. And now, the next group of honored students are recognized as our summa cum laude students. Their grade point average for their four years of high school is at a 4.01 or higher. This means that these students have to had participated in our most rigorous courses. That means they have to have kept up good grade averages in honors, dual enrollment, or AP courses. Students earning the designation of summa cum laude are Amaya Allen, Emma Allen, Thomas Baranelli, Mitt Bellani, Bryson Boudreaux, Colby Brown, Emily Butler, Angelina Carew, Diego Carnero Montero, Connor Charron, Alexia Chesbrough, Erin Champa, Shannon Crowley, Sydney Crowley, Megan Cunningham, Rebecca Deck, Rebecca DeFrancesco, Tyler Demers, Gianna DiGiorgio, Michaela Enax, Sophie Eskena, Alex Zheng, Jake Custon, Emily Hankins, Matthew Howton, Michael Kelleher, Patrick Killian, Andrew LaPierre, Rhiannon Leslie, Kate Lowry, Maya Medina, Christopher Nguyen, Alex Osala, Megan Ostertag, Sarah Patriaka, Campbell Pierce, Sarah Palomino, Gianna Ragucci, Ariana Rezo, Victoria Schill, Jessica Smith, Christina Spezafaro, Zachary Spiegel, Garrett Starr, Caitlin Staskowicz, Elizabeth Taggart, Kylie Tibbetts, Jasmine Wan, and Morgan Woodman. Congratulations, class of 2020, summa cum laude students. And now, in our class of 2020, the top ranking 5% of the graduating class. Mr. Stadman, you have a proclamation for these honored students.
I do. So our resolution of recognition, whereas Tuxbury Memorial High School recognizes the top ranking 5% of the 2020 graduating class, Emily, Megan, Michaela, Christopher, Megan, Gianna, Victoria, Zachary, Elizabeth, Kylie, and Jasmine, whereas you have distinguished yourselves academically at Tuxbury Memorial High School by taking the highest rigor courses available and achieving a GPA of 4.10 or higher, and whereas you have earned the designation of summa cum laude, and whereas you are the top ranking 5% of the graduating class of 2020, and have brought great pride, recognition, and honor to yourselves, to your parents and families, to Tuxbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town school committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Emily, Megan, Michaela, Christopher, Megan, Gianna, Victoria, Zachary, Elizabeth, Kylie, and Jasmine, submitted by this year's school committee dated the 20th day of May, 2020. Great job, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, while the top 5% were not listed in any particular order, they were in ABC order, the next three students are listed in a particular order. The class of 2020, class marshal. Class marshal is designated by the student with the third highest ranking grade point average, and that is Elizabeth Taggart. Ms. Shannon Demos has a proclamation for Ms. Taggart.
Ms. Demos, I think you might be on mute.
I was, thank you, Mr. Malone. I have the distinct pleasure tonight to read the resolution of recognition for Lizzie. So here it is. Whereas Lizzie Taggart is an outstanding student at Tuxbury Memorial High School in the graduating class of 2020, and whereas Lizzie is an active member of the National Honor Society, and whereas Lizzie received the designation of summa cum laude and will be attending the University of Richmond, and whereas Lizzie earned a high GPA placing her in the top 5% of the class of 2020, and whereas Lizzie will be named class marshal of class of 2020, and whereas Lizzie Taggart has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, to the Tuxbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tuxbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tuxbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Lizzie Taggart, submitted to you today by the Tuxbury School Committee dated May 20th, 2020.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations, Lizzie, and thank you very much for joining us. You certainly don't feel like you have to, but we had you on here because we'd be more than happy or welcome if you would like to say a few words or anything. You have the floor if you would like it.
I just wanted to say thank you to my family and friends, and especially the administration and the school committee for recognizing us still. and the school committee for recognizing us, recognizing us still.
It's our pleasure. You worked hard and you deserved it.
Yes, I feel the same. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson. Is there anything you would like to say to this wonderful young woman?
No, just congratulations and best of luck as you move on to the University of Richmond. All these experiences over the last, you know, 68 weeks, I'm sure are going to be, while they were challenging, they're going to make you a much stronger and better person down the road, and we just can't wait to see what you do in the future because I know you're going to do great things. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Any words, Mr. Stadman?
No words.
Right, and Mr. Cutlass?
Just congratulations and good luck at the University of Richmond.
Thank you.
Go Spiders! Thanks, Lizzie, congratulations, and thanks for coming on with us. I'd like to turn it back over to Mrs. Regan now.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Pardon. Forget to shut off some of these electronics. The next honored student is our number two ranking student in the class of 2020 designated as salutatorian, and that is Megan Cunningham. Mr. Cutlass, you have a proclamation to read for Megan.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan. For Megan Cunningham, the salutatorian, a resolution of recognition, whereas Megan Cunningham is an outstanding student at Tewksbury Memorial High School in the graduating class of 2020, and whereas Megan is an active member of the National Honor Society, and whereas Megan received the designation of summa cum laude, and whereas Megan earned a high GPA, placing her in the top 5% of the class of 2020, and whereas Megan has been named salutatorian of the class of 2020, and will be attending the University of Connecticut, and whereas Megan Cunningham has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, to Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Megan Cunningham, submitted by the school committee dated this 20th day of May 2020. Congratulations, Megan, on a great job.
Thank you, Mrs. Regan.
Congratulations, Megan. As with Lizzie, you're more than welcome to say a few words if you'd like to.
Sure. I just wanted to thank all of my teachers and everyone that's supported me over the years, and also thank you to the school committee for this recognition.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wilson, anything to add?
I'll just add, congratulations, Megan. Great job. Best of luck at the University of Connecticut, and we'll be rooting for you and hoping for great things.
Thank you.
Mr. Stadman?
Yep, no, it's, you know, stay safe out there, keep going at UConn, and, you know, congratulations.
All right, Mrs. Demos?
Just like to say, congratulations, best wishes, and be well.
Great, and I'll add, go Huskies! Thanks again for joining us, Megan, and congratulations.
Okay. And yes, that moment we've all been waiting for, and that is our top ranking student of the class of 2020, our valedictorian. I present to you Victoria Schill. I think, Mr. Wilson, you have a proclamation to read for Victoria.
Yes, I'm very proud to read this resolution of recognition, whereas Tori Shilly is an outstanding student at Tewksbury Memorial High School in the graduating class of 2020, and Victoria is an active member of the National Honor Society, and Tori has received the designation of summa cum laude, and Victoria has earned a high GPA, placing her in the top 5% of the class of 2020, and Victoria has been named valedictorian of a class of 2020, and will be attending the University of Massachusetts Amherst. Tori Shilly has brought great pride, recognition, and honor to herself, to her parents and family, to Tewksbury Memorial High School, and to the town of Tewksbury. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Tewksbury School Committee applauds, honors, and recognizes the exceptional performance of Victoria Shilly, dated this 20th day of May 2020. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Tori had a special honor. So it's been clear that Tori has done it academically, she's been a leader in the schools, and she's also done it athletically, as she was one of the inaugural recipients of the Harry Aganis Student Athlete of the Year scholarship. We're so proud of you for this, to be the first time they've honored anyone that way, and for you to be the first one to receive that is just tremendous, and just thank you for all you've contributed to our schools, our community, and just for being the wonderful person you are. Congratulations, Tori.
Thanks, Scott. I just wanted to say thank you to my family and all of my teachers that I've had over the years. I wouldn't even be graduating without them, so the fact that I'm actually valedictorian, I think, is crazy. And I just also want to thank the administration and the school committee for trying to make all these events that we're missing as special as we possibly can. I think you guys are doing an awesome job, and I know that I feel pretty special, so I'm sure everyone else does too. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Tori. Mrs. Demos, do you have anything to add?
Just want to say congratulations to her as well, and I wish her all the best in the future. Can't wait to see what good things she does.
Thank you.
I'll just say the same. Congratulations to Victoria. Great to be the number one, and good luck at UMass Amherst.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. Stadman?
Finally, Mr. Stadman. No, just like all my colleagues have said, you know, keep up the great work, you know, good luck out in UMass, you know, it's a great school, and, you know, keep us in mind in here at Tewksbury.
Yes, of course. Tewksbury at heart. Thank you.
Congratulations, Tori, and I'm going to blow up your trivia question, so Wilson can get that right. I'm going to give you a full trivia. I think it was two weeks, the same season, two weeks, that you were state champion with the Decker State Championship win in the hockey. Am I pretty close with that?
Yeah, best two weeks of my life.
I'm sure you'll have more to come. Thank you. You're a tremendous representative of our town. I can't share enough, not just you and the other two women, but all of our students, especially the ones that have achieved at this level academically, which is very important to us. You guys have always conducted yourself and represented yourself and Tewksbury in a wonderful way, so good luck in all your future, and thanks again for being here with us tonight, all three of you. I would like to add a little personal thing. I know we all share, like you do, that we're not happy about being in this virtual detention. And Corona, you know, may have stripped you of part of your senior year and your in-person graduation, but remember, it cannot and it will not stop you or your future. If you focus on what you can gain from this experience as opposed to dwelling on what you feel you lost, that outlook and that attitude can help change the world. Always stay positive, work hard every day, and always remember, wherever you go or end up in life, you have the power to make the world a better place for all of us. Congratulations to all of the students and all of our 2020 graduates. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if it's all right, I'd like to indulge the committee while Principal Vogel is still on the call. One, obviously, the excellence of these students has a lot to do with her and her leadership team and her staff, but Tori also mentioned, you know, some of the other senior happenings and other things. If all right with the committee, I'd like Ms. Vogel to kind of highlight some of the other elements going on with the senior class this year.
That would be great.
Ms. Vogel?
Great, thank you. And I wouldn't, I need to start by thanking all of you on the school committee, as well as Assistant Superintendent Regan and Superintendent Malone for collaborating with us and supporting us in planning all of these special events to recognize this wonderful class and considering these unique circumstances. So we want to thank you for all of your help with this and the planning and the coordination and details, et cetera. But just to highlight some of what we have coming up this week, the seniors received their cap and gowns and the yard signs, they were delivered to their homes. Next week will be their last week of remote learning, and the following week will be their drive-up graduation diploma-receiving event. So on Friday, seniors and families will receive an email coming from the high school with specific information and details about the date and the timeframe for which they should come to the high school, and specifically with some details around what that might look like. So they should keep an eye out for an email coming from the high school on Friday sometime with those details. Also, next week, seniors will be receiving a link to a video for recognition of our senior athletes. So all of our, as we all know, the spring season was canceled, and those senior athletes didn't have the opportunity to receive the recognition that a lot of our senior athletes have received every season, and those received in the fall and in the winter. So the coaches and parents put together wonderful little recognitions for each of our senior athletes on their spring teams, and that video link will be coming out at the end of next week. We also have a celebratory senior signing video that will be coming out where we have around, I believe it's somewhere between 13 and 16 scholar athletes who will be attending and playing at the college level. So all of them took pictures or videos of them signing their letters of intent to play at the collegiate level, and we will be putting out a nice little video in celebration of those wonderful scholar athletes next week as well. And then finally, on June 5th, which is our commencement day, at 6:30 PM, there will be an email coming that day with a link to our virtual ceremony. Seniors will also be receiving a paper copy of our graduation program, and they will get that when they receive their diploma the few days leading up to June 5th.
Is that it, Ms. Vogel?
That is it. I don't know if anyone has any questions for us?
I'll start with Mr. Wilson. Do you have any questions for Principal Vogel?
I don't. All I'll say is, Kristin, thank you for all your hard work. I know that this has been a trying time, and I know that you've been probably fielding the calls and the emails and meeting after meeting about trying to make these events as special as we can, and I think what you guys have come up with, you and your team, is tremendous, and I think it's the best we can do at a difficult time to really recognize these kids and say thank you for your time at Tewksbury Memorial High School, and just thank you. I think it's great that you took the time to really do it right, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Mr. Stadman?
Yeah, I want to, you know, go along with that, and, you know, thank you as well for all the, you know, the time that you put in, your time there at the high school, and especially, again, all the trying times now. Again, no words can express, you know, most people would be, you know, three quarters of the way out the door, especially with times like this, whereas, you know, you've put in more than enough hours plus, so definitely appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Demos?
I just wanted to say a great big thank you to Kristin. I know this has not been easy for her, and I do appreciate all the time and effort and, you know, lending an ear to everyone that had a call and a question and, you know, quick to respond to the emails. It goes a long way, that frequent open communication is much appreciated. It definitely is something that we will miss up there at the high school and hopefully we'll find, you know, going forward, but I wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and I thank you for everything that you did for the class of 2020 and all the classes up at the high school now, and for everything you've done. We'll miss you.
Thank you.
Mr. Cutlass?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just reiterate what everyone else said, and thank Mrs. Vogel for a great job and wish you good luck in the future at the Lynnfield.
Thank you.
I'd like to extend a congratulations as well, Mrs. Vogel, for, I think it's a feather in our cap that you're moving from principal to superintendent. You've done a very good job here, I think, very thorough. We're certainly going to miss you, and, you know, we're here to support you for your final days, and I know this is a difficult time for a lot of families with this graduation, but I really think when they see the end result and the personal touch, that I think we're going to make it as best as we can for Tewksbury. So for that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
You're welcome. All right, I now like to turn it over to Mr. Malone. Actually, hold on there, Superintendent. Brian, are you there? I see where we have no presentation, so. Brian, did we have anyone calling for the citizens forum portion? Okay, you want to just keep it open for me while we do, and we go about our normal business, that way if someone does feel, you know, either they're behind or something jogged their memory and they want to call in, I certainly want to give the public that opportunity, so. That being said, I'd like to now turn it over to Mrs. Demos for our approval of minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2020, for the virtual special meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second that. Motion and a second to approve the April 14th virtual special meeting. This requires a roll call vote. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. I'd like to turn it back over to Mrs. Demos for the regular meeting minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the minutes, the minutes of April 15th, 2020, for the virtual regular meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. It's another unanimous vote. I'd like to turn it back over to the clerk for our payroll, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the school department payroll for the period ending April 16th, 2020, to be approved and certified, and the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending April 16th. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the school department payroll for the period ending April 30th, 2020, to be approved and certified, and the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve the April 30th, 2020 payroll. How do you vote, Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. And the final payroll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the school department payroll for the period ending May 14th, 2020, to be approved and certified, and the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,304,855.38.
and certified, and the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,304,855.38.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll, pay period ending May 14th, 2020. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much, Mrs. Demos. I would now like to turn the floor over to Superintendent Malone for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it very much. First, wanted to open up with some news in regards to the CARES Act, which is a federal government program distributed through the state. And this provides districts with emergency relief funds to address the impact of COVID-19 and what those impacts are and will continue to be, and is delivered through the elementary and secondary schools. This is a significant piece with some of the unknown budget issues that we may be facing as a result of this pandemic. I'll talk a little bit more about that overview as a prelude to the budget presentation. But certainly what this would allow us to do is as an entitlement grant upwards of $280,000, which would allow us to offset some of the costs that we have incurred or will incur as a result of this pandemic. Certainly, there will be other budget concerns when we look at state funding and other elements of that to come, but this is certainly a beginning piece and certainly a clear indication that both the federal government and DESE recognize that school districts will be facing this challenge. It's unknown what we're going to look like in the fall. It's unknown what we're going to have to prepare for and what impact that will have on our budget, but this is certainly a step in the direction that will be helpful. Mr., the elements that come in this, we participated in a webinar last Wednesday, Mr. Libby and myself, in regards to this, and the elements of this grant are fairly straightforward, and we hope to have this filled out by early to mid-June. So hopefully, that will provide us some relief for the FY21 budget coming up. In addition to that, DESE put out its most recent letter on May 8th to parents in regards to the pandemic, and what they've really done is broken this pandemic up into four phases. They really see us currently in Phase 3, where schools remain to be closed, and we're heading to Phase 4 with reopening. Weekly, we have been getting updates from the state level on what reopening possibilities will be. No specific elements were given in the governor's most recent statement on Monday about reopening, but there are pieces there that we are beginning to plan for, but details have not been forthcoming from the state, and certainly even summer camps have not been ruled out by the state as of yet. The concern for the district with that is that without appropriate lead time, even the best of conditions that could be set up for camp may be very difficult for us to move forward with. We will need some lead time if the state allows us to move forward with summer camps such as alphabet, or any type of summer programming such as special education or academic recovery programs. We would need lead time to establish staffing, purchasing preventive gear, of which we don't know what will be required and some elements like that. So we are patiently waiting for the directives but have not received any as of yet. Congratulations out to Mr. Libby and his team in the business office. The district received its report on applying agreed-upon procedures and over compliance applicable to Massachusetts School District's end-of-year financial report for FY19. This is that big report that consolidates all the FY19 budget, and it was outstanding to find that we certainly had no matters of interest and no findings in that audit. So great work by Mr. Libby and his team. In addition to that, as we talked about last meeting and talked about refunding user fees for athletics in the spring where those sports did not occur, we are also looking at a mechanism to refund portions of the parking fee that students incurred at the high school. Mr. Libby, what is the amount we're going, or percentage we're going to be reimbursing at?
It really varies by when the student signed up, because we reduced the fee to $75 in January. We prorated the amounts based on the number of days that they got to use their parking permit versus the days that they didn't get to use, and came up with a percentage refund. So generally, folks are getting between, you know, $50 and $50 to $65 back from the It really depended on when they paid and how many days they got to use their pass.
All right. Thank you. And as a follow-up, Ms. Vogel has left this meeting, but certainly congratulations out to her, and we'll probably talk a little bit more about that next month. But with her taking the position as of July 1st of Superintendent of Schools in Lynnfield, we certainly wanted to move forward with a principal search. We took on surveying the high school staff, surveying high school parents, interacting with the high school administration, and meeting with the department heads of the high school to kind of determine what kind of characteristics they'd want to look at in their new leader, and more importantly, develop a strategy in regards to the current pandemic situation and the likelihood of full candidates wanting to apply in these current circumstances and making a determination whether it was best to move forward with a traditional search for a new principal or look at an interim situation in hopes that we can conduct a more thorough search a year from now. The staff and the parent surveys fairly significantly showed the fact that they wanted to move to an interim situation due to the current situations, which we tend to agree with. With that, we posted the position for interim Tuxbury Memorial High School principal two weeks ago. The applicants for that position deadline closed today. We had 23 applicants for the position. There will be a screening committee has been set to look at those, to finalize some, that will finalize some candidates for interviews. There has been an interview committee set that will hopefully meet next week to interview candidates and make final recommendations, to me as superintendent, in regards to the position for the interim principal position for next year. So that process is thoroughly underway. We hope to have those decisions made by the next time we meet and have a, certainly a prospective candidate to take the reins as interim principal starting July 1 by the next time we meet in June. Also, hats off to the Special Education Department, who provided a virtual behavioral training for parents last Wednesday, and that will be repeated for parents. Again, just trying to find some different ways to recognize the needs of parents, trying to find ways to service parents and students virtually when some of those aspects aren't able to be done in person. Also notice that the construction fence that separates the Ryan School and the new school building construction site has begun to go up. So that is a new development, and we will continue to look at what other developments come as a result of that. Obviously, the fact that schools are not in session physically, you know, has allowed those to operate fairly freely, but we want to be mindful of what we're operationally going to look like in the fall and make sure that site is safe for Ryan students and for Ryan activities while it is ongoing. Huge thank you out to Mr. Richard Iandoli, Tuxbury resident and parent who contacted me earlier this week in regards to his donation of masks. And he donated hundreds of masks that we will certainly send a thank you along to him. I was able to go by his place of business in Wilmington today and pick those items up. It is the generosity of pieces like that that are going to help us during this tough time. Some of these elements are, even if we have money set aside in the budget to purchase, can be difficult to get a hold of, and we will be competing with all school districts and likely all businesses in trying to attain these pieces as we continue to open up as a state. But once again, thank you to Mr. Iandoli for his very generous donation. We had quite a few recognition weeks this past week. Friday, May 1st, was a proclamation by the governor for lunch hero day, which myself and a few other administrators were able to join our lunch distribution center at the North Street School. Our food service people are just doing a great job. The numbers of meals they're serving are continuing to go up, approaching 200 a day. Just amazing work by all of them, and it's really the smile and generosity that parents and students get when they pull up in their car and receive those goods that really sends the clear message. But great work and congratulations on school lunch hero day on May 1st. Also, the week of May 6th was National School Nurse Recognition Day. Our nurses, again, have been doing an outstanding job, working directly with the town board of health, working on specific COVID-19 interventions with the town and supporting the town nurse and the town administration. We couldn't be more proud of them. They're working hard and really making a difference for the citizens of Tuxbury. Teacher Appreciation Week was last week, also Principal Appreciation Week. So we had a lot of PAC celebrations for teachers and a lot of support for that, and great work. The PACs did a nice job trying to figure out virtual ways to really recognize teachers and all their hard work, so we're very proud of that. And once again, our custodians, our secretaries, our central office staff have all continued to do great work. We're very proud of everything they're doing, both remotely and in person, and it's a great indication of the fact that, coupled with guidance from the state, we'll be able to come up with a great reopening plan with the support of all these staff. Just a reminder that there is a virtual art show going on within the district with art show elements wanting to be supplied by May 22nd. So again, a great example of our art teachers coming together, thinking about a traditional event, looking at ways to do it alternatively and remotely, and really celebrating student art. And if you ever get to see the art show in person, it's just a great event. It includes musical performances and other elements like that. But the fact that the teachers came together and wanted to do it virtually is just another great example of how we're trying to adapt remotely. In addition, our teachers will begin to work on a plan to re-enter the school next week to collect belongings and to not only their own belongings, take home, but collect student belongings. Once those student belongings are collected, we will message out to parents in ways that they can come by the schools and pick up those items that are most important for them to retrieve, consolidate textbooks, do some other elements like that. So principals will be messaging out directly to families when that occurs. Next week, we'll be focusing on teachers coming in and doing that work. So we're starting some of those pieces to really prepare for a traditional end to the school year, which is June 15th, so that we can do the appropriate cleaning and other things we do over the summer for our school buildings, and also think about what are the elements we're going to need for a reopening. So we have a lot going on in the district despite the fact that the schools are closed and we're operating remotely. Mr. Chair, in the last month, we looked at the calendar specific to a couple elements. The committee looked at a calendar in reaction to Labor Day being a little bit later than it typically is. In addition to that, we had made some previous determinations around continuing on with remote learning through April vacation. Kind of the elements we've looked at educationally is since that brought our last day of school to June 15th, and since we had looked at the unusual late start in the year due to the calendar and where Labor Day lies, one of the concerns that was presented out was the amount of distance now between when a student ends school and now the fact that they'll be starting later. We are certainly eager to reengage with students as soon as we possibly can in a safe manner, but we are a little bit concerned about how that calendar lined up with the unusual Labor Day and the change in ending a little bit early because of working through April vacation. We have also done a parent survey in regards to the start date for the 2020-2020 school year. Over 60% of the parents felt that if we could adjust the calendar to start before Labor Day in the last week of August, in, for students, that would be Monday, August 31st. If we could move there, they would be very much in favor of that. We've also worked with the teachers' union. They're also in favor of moving that date. So what I would ask is, Mr. Chairman, would the committee indulge looking at an adjustment to the 2020-2021 school calendar to adjust the start date for students from Wednesday, May 2 until Monday, May 31st? So that was an element that I want to present to the school committee and see it's something that you would want to discuss and potentially make any determinations on.
Sure. Before we get to discussions, the dates are September. I think you inadvertently said May.
I apologize. September 2 is the current start date for students, and Monday, August 31st would be the proposed new start date for students.
Okay. I'd like to open it up, and we'll start with Mrs. Demos. Your thoughts?
Mr. Malone, can I just have you clarify for me? Did you say that it was recommended by both the TTA and the parents to move it back to the 31st?
That is correct. It was embedded within a survey on remote learning to parents. I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 63% of parents agreed with moving that date. I don't have a percentage from the TTA. What I have is confirmation and writing from the TTA president that they had polled their members and they were in favor of it. I don't know what the percentage was or anything like that.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify if I heard that correct, that they were on board for the August 31st start date?
Correct.
And that would, what would that bring their teachers' first day to school?
So that would bring teachers back on Wednesday, August 26th, and Thursday, August 27th as PD days. Friday, August 28th would be a non-workday. And then both staff and students would all return on Monday, August 31st.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I had. I just wanted to clarify that I heard that correct. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stadman, your thoughts?
I have no questions.
Mr. Cutlass?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman. The parents and teachers want to do it. I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Yep, exactly what Jamie just said. If, you know, if everyone's on board, let's do it.
Okay. Superintendent, are you looking for a motion tonight? Is it something that needs to be sent tonight?
We did take, we took a vote on the calendar. What I would, what I would ask is the committee to entertain taking a vote, particularly on the start date for students. So parents are aware as of tonight what the start date will be for students. There might be some other elements within the overall calendar if we do change the dates we need to make adjustments to. So this is all kind of new news we just heard today, but I think what is important that is if parents knew when students were starting and staff knew when they were starting, that would be really important for planning purposes in light of this pandemic. And if the opening continues over the summer, people will want to plan vacations and other things of that. So I would want to make sure they knew those start dates as soon as possible.
Great. Okay. With that being said, what is the pleasure of the board?
So, Mr. Chair...
So, Mr. Chair, can I make a motion to move the official first day of school for all students to Monday, August 31st, 2020?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to move the first day of school for students from September 2nd, 2020 to August 31st, 2020. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. It's an unanimous vote. And just one thing, Mr. Malone, before we go on to Mrs. Regan, I'm just going to go down. I know you presented a lot of stuff, so I'm going to reach out to my colleagues if anyone had any other questions or concerns regarding your report. And I'll start with Mrs. Demos.
I have none, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stadman?
None as well, thank you.
Mr. Cutlass?
I'll sit, Mr. Chair.
Great. Mr. Wilson?
I'll sit.
Great. I had one comment, Superintendent. I just wanted to thank you and your staff, not just you, but your staff and the town for, one, reaching out and getting us back on live so people can see what's going on. I think it's very important. I think people are already used to being able to come home and see and watch us. And where we went virtually there for that month, I think there was a void. And also, I don't think there's a whole lot going on. So I think we probably have some more people tuned in than we normally would, which is good. And then also, people can get their information right here firsthand. So that's kudos to you and your staff and the town and Brian doing the WebEx also along those lines. Can't say enough, we all feel it, how important it is to make sure that we didn't have NHS Night and for us to be able to incorporate it in our little way is a big thing for all of us. So kudos for that as well. So I just wanted to make sure that was said before we moved on. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, one more element on the calendar, and I think it was beneficial that Mr. Stadman made the motion as he did because it's very clear for parents. There is another piece out there in regards to staff start dates, and it might be beneficial to clarify that tonight for our staff and for our union personnel, that their first day back for professional development will be Wednesday, August 26th. I think since that is a change in the calendar, that may require a vote as well.
Okay. Are you looking for that tonight?
I think that would be best, just so our staff can plan. And the union has done a lot of work on this, so I'd like to certainly verify for them that this in fact is the schedule that their union membership can plan on being as part of their work year for next year.
Okay. Do you want to make sure we don't have any discussion or questions, Mrs. Demos?
No, I think it was clear that the union was on board with this start date, and it'll be them that it's affecting. So that's all I know.
Thank you. Mr. Stadman?
Nope.
Thank you. Mr. Cutlass?
Well, I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson?
Nothing.
Okay, great. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we establish August 26th as the start date for the teachers.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chris, is that detailed enough?
It might. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I think it might be best to say that the start of the year for teachers will be professional development on August 27th. Just so they know, those two particular dates, 28th is not a workday. I don't think we need to take a motion on the fact that that's, we'll put that in the motion. But I think typically, the information they go by is what are the first two days of professional development? So I think if the motion included that the first two days for teachers reporting will be professional development days on Wednesday, August 26th, and Thursday, August 27th.
So I'm going to revise my motion to go with exactly what Chris just said. The 26th and 27th as professional days for our teachers.
Excellent. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to establish August 26th and August 27th as professional development days for the teachers. How do you vote, Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Mrs. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My updates are brief. I'd like to just draw your attention to the consent agenda where you can see our updated school year 2021 chain of command. We send this out annually to our parents, and it's helpful also to our staff. When there's an issue or a question, that chain of command is really helpful in knowing who to communicate to first. There are very few changes. You can see that we implanted the Student and Family Support Director into the 504 Plans chain of command. We have our high school principal as to be determined, and potentially, if we're able to give you that name prior to the end of the school year, we will put our new high school principal's name onto the command. And then, let's see, I think those are the only change. Oh, and pardon me, Principal Felicia Whitstone's name changed to Felicia Chenovich. The second of my updates includes also in your consent agenda is a portion of our update that we sent out in the district newsletter to our families regarding the Quarter Three Report Card and the Special Education Progress Report. You can see that we tried to spell out for all the multiple grade bands what Quarter Three would look like to parents. Certainly, we were in a very unique quarter of the year, and parents had recently, right before the school closure on March 13th, received their progress report on March 6th. So students received feedback on their progress, K through 8, as far as meeting their grade level expectations. At high school, because these are credit-bearing courses, students received an average, a grade average. And then there was specific information for high schools within that link that parents received separately. And then our special ed students all received their Grade 3 Progress Report. Special ed students received four progress reports throughout the year concurrent with the report card. All of the report cards and progress reports for the entire district were posted to the Student Aspen Portal, along with a video tutorial. And we heard from parents, it was quite easy, and which makes us very hopeful that going paperless in the near future for many of the reports we give is something that we can do. That's right, Dave. Mr. Libby, I'm with you. For Quarter 4, we will include, and we also have a Quarter 4 document. I haven't put it into the consent agenda tonight. It was in the district newsletter that you received. Quarter 4 will include comments on students' remote learning participation for K through 8. And again, will include credit or no credit for our high school for those semester or full year courses. The final grade will be averaged for the year. And I can tell you that our administrative team is still, we're working together to truly develop all of the details that go into final grading, what Quarter 4 should and should say, and a process that is fair and equitable to all of our students and families in this very different time of remote learning. So I'll provide you with more information on that as when we come back on June 10th. It will also, as we develop that process, be communicated out to our families through the district newsletter. On that note, I really feel, and I hope that many parents are still watching, I just really have to shout out to our administrative team who meets every day. And Mr. Libby can attest to this, as well as can Superintendent Malone, this is a really hard-working group of administrators. We are rewriting every page of the book. End-of-year planning is an immense task in a normal year. But in a year like this, every single task that we do or think about has to be rethought and redeveloped. And with, you know, students first, families, equity, fairness, sensitivity, and it really is a huge lift. And I'm sure Ms. Demos is experiencing that with her own district. So, you know, and then our principals go back and they serve, I mean, just on so many different PLCs and committees and teacher groups and parent groups, trying to then communicate and plan all this out. So I do hope that many of our parents are watching. We appreciate your feedback, but we really want you to know that we're being very thoughtful to plan through every little detail as we continue through Quarter 4 and try to end out this school year. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Mrs. Demos, you have any questions for Mrs. Regan?
No, I have no questions, just lots of appreciation for all the time and effort. I totally get where you're coming from. It's a lot of hours, and I appreciate it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Stadman?
Yes, thank you as well for your hard work and all the rest of the administration for, again, all the work that they do and continue to do and continue to do.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Mr. Cutlass?
No, just to thank Mrs. Regan for her hard work. We know she's the hottest working person we have in the district, so.
Thank you, Jamie.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, just thank you, really. I didn't get to say it to Chris, but to Chris, Brenda, and Dave, I mean, everything that you guys do, your team has done, these are just different times, and we're learning as we go. And you guys have done a tremendous job learning, leading, and helping us through this. So thank you for everything that you've done, and thank you for all the success that you're helping the district have.
Great team.
Great. And on a personal note, thank you. I am really a dinosaur with the technology. So you have helped me immensely, more than you'll ever know, with these meetings and whatnot. So thank you for that. And with that, I'd like to ask Mr. Libby to see if he has a quick update.
Quick prelude, Mr. Libby, on the budget?
Sure. Well, I was going to do the, I think we're going to get to the budget and full business.
Okay, that's fine. Then you can do your updates.
Yeah. I just had a brief report to the committee on another part of the CARES Act that hit Tewksbury today. A federal farmers-to-families food box program has been initiated by the USDA as part of the CARES Act. It's designed to help the agricultural industry who's been hit hard by the restaurant closures in the country. And the federal government is buying produce, dairy, and meat products and using their food distributors to leverage relationships with nonprofits to get those food products in the hands of those in need. And we participated in that today through our Food Service Grab and Go program. And here in Tewksbury, we received 56 20-pound boxes of mixed produce. And so some of the families who showed up today at the Grab and Go Lunch Meal Program received a little bonus box of produce when they arrived. So it was a nice little cooperative effort between our maintenance and custodian group and the food services gang. The maintenance guys were moving the food around and getting it to the folks who showed up. And went really well today, and we're looking forward to being able to participate in that program. It goes from May through, I believe, the end of June. So as we get those deliveries in from the USDA, we'll be distributing that out to our families here in Tewksbury. So it was a pretty exciting development today. I'm pretty impressed that it was approved on April 17th, and about a month later, we're actually distributing food to folks in our community. So, great job.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Libby. Mrs. Demos, you have any questions for Mr. Libby?
Mr. Libby, can you just tell me what it was, federal farmers-to-food box? Is that what it was called under the CARES?
It was Federal Farmers-to-Families Food Box Program.
Okay.
It's run by the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
Oh, okay. I hadn't heard of it, so.
Yeah. We hadn't either. And then Friday, we heard from one of our vendors and asked if we wanted to participate. And Jeff Muckford, our Food Service Director, said, sure, we'd love to.
Absolutely. With all the families that are struggling at this time, that's an excellent resource for Tewksbury residents. Excellent. Thanks, Dave.
Sure.
That's great. Mr. Stadman?
That's fantastic. Fantastic thing. Definitely jump on that and sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Cutlass?
I just want to thank Mr. Libby for all his hard work as well on this. Excellent job.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Wilson?
Just to thank you.
Great. And I'll say thanks as well, Mr. Libby. I'm sure we're going to hear from you with the budget at the end. So thank you for that. And before we move on, Brian, do we have anyone calling in? Okay, great. Thank you. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding the consent agenda? I'd start with Mrs. Demos.
No questions tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stadman.
No questions.
Great. Mr. Cutlass?
I'll sit, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
No questions, thank you.
Great, thank you. I don't have any questions, but I do have a comment. I noticed that we are due to accept if voted on tonight and donate an amount of $10,000 from the Ryan PAC. So I just wanted to personally acknowledge and thank the leadership, you know, obviously everyone in the PAC. I have the list of the leadership here, Ms. Christine Arquette, Erin Claycomb, Bridget Garabedian, and Deborah Cantardi. They've donated $10,000 so they can designate a new courtyard in the middle of the Ryan School. So we certainly have some tremendous PACs here in the district, and we can't thank those people enough, not just those leaders, but everyone that's donating and helping over there at the Ryan PAC. So with that being said, what's the pleasure of the board regarding the consent agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented in our packets.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda. Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye, I got that. And the chair votes aye as well. That's the unanimous vote. Moving on to committee reports, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Cutlass for the Elementary School Building Committee project.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're moving right along with that project. As Mr. Malone, Superintendent Malone said earlier, Consigliere has erected a fence around the perimeter of the project, and they're going to start to ramp up and complete the project. We got Planning Board approvals a couple of weeks ago and Conservation Commission approval a couple of weeks ago as well. So everything is going along smoothly with that project, and you're going to start to see Consigliere and a number of workers out there. They developed the whole COVID-19 employee working plan so as to make sure everyone's safe, and they're going to implement that as well. And everything's going good with that. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Very good news, Mr. Cutlass. Mrs. Demos for the Tewksbury Education Foundation?
We have not met. There are no updates tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. For the Tewksbury CPAC, the Tewksbury CPAC has been very busy, meeting with myself and the administration, I think, the last about five weeks. I think today was the first Wednesday in at least the month that we haven't met. They've been a very valuable resource with remote learning and all that's going on, especially regarding, you know, special student services. you know, special student services. So they've been really helpful in that manner. They started meeting, they had their first virtual meeting last Wednesday. They're due to have their next meeting on May 28th. That's next Thursday. Well, they will be having their election for offices at a virtual meeting. Those are open public meetings. Anyone's welcome to attend virtually. And that information is posted on the town website. So that's that for the CPAC. Mr. Stadman, any update on the Wellness Advisory Committee?
Uh, no. We have not met. But I hear that the school is really clean and it's very, very well.
That's great news. Clean is good.
Clean is good.
All right. I'd like to now turn the floor over to Mrs. Demos for our policy changes, proposals, and adoptions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have quite a few policies to talk about tonight. These policies that I'm going to share with you first are policies to be rescinded. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees have found these policies to either be redundant or unnecessary. And I just want to remind the school committee and the town that this is the second and final reading of these policies. And the full policies are available on the website if anyone is interested in reading them. But the following policies I am reading for the second and final reading are policies to be rescinded. And the first one is IHA, Basic Instruction Programming, IHB, Home Schooling, JLA, Student Insurance Program, Policy JLD, Guidance Program, JP, Student Gifts and Solicitations. Those are all the policies to rescind. The following policies are recommended for revision to the Tewksbury Public Schools policies or to adopt Massachusetts Association of School Committee policies. These are also second and final readings. Again, can be found on the website for any viewer that wants to see the entire policy. The first policy is JB, Equal Educational Opportunities. Second is JBB, Educational Equity, followed by JFABD, Homeless Students, Enrollment Rights and Services, Policy JFABE, Educational Opportunities for Military Children. And the final one this evening is Policy JFABF, Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care. And those are the policies recommended for revision. Those are what I have for you tonight.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. And correct me if I'm wrong, Superintendent Malone, we will vote on those at the next meeting?
Correct, Mr. Jim.
Okay. So obviously, for those, if they do have any questions or comments or concerns, they can still reach out to any one of us on the school committee or the superintendent as well, if you need to get any clarity or, you know, maybe there's something in there that you think, you know, might require a second look at us to look at. So thank you, Mrs. Demos. Moving on to full business, and I just have one item, Mr. Malone, that I think I forgot to, more of a question regarding your report. Just so the public's aware now that we're being broadcast, can you just talk about the June 29th date and how the governor has not provided any additional guidance or insight? Now that things are somewhat opening up, I think there's some communication in the community why people don't understand why they can't be in the school property or in the grounds or whatnot. So I thought that would be important.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Certainly. The governor's order that came out in late April specifically prohibits in-person learning until June 29th to include summer programming. So that's a very specific element. In other words, there is no, to be no in-person instruction. What makes that difficult, until that order is addressed, it is very difficult for us to plan or execute any sense of summer programming, even if we could, even if we were given the appropriate CDC or statewide guidelines, and aren't provide that. In addition to that, we are waiting for further guidance on what the preparedness is gonna need to be to open up in the fall. We certainly believe we will be opening up in the fall. What we don't know is under what conditions, under what circumstances. The CDC has come out with some guidance that has come and gone. The state, the governor, very specifically did not address return to school in his Monday reopening plan. So those are some elements that we will absolutely have to look at. But per his order, what has not been changed and has been in effect for several weeks now is a no in-person education at schools until June, before June 29th. We don't know what's gonna happen after June 29th, but we know nothing can happen before June 29th.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. And moving on to all business, I guess you have the floor, Superintendent Malone, regarding the FY21 budget?
According to Mr. Libby, I do. So just a quick prelude. Mr. Libby's gonna obviously talk about what we've discussed as a committee for a few months now, which is the FY21 budget. It's a known budget. I think it's a, a very bare bones budget. It's a budget that Mr. Libby and I have worked closely with the town on the allotted funding coming from the town. We're, we're very confident with the budget. What some of the unknowns are as we hear communities near us, fully discussing pay freezes, possible layoffs, other pieces of that. Some of those communities have had some direct impact in regards to funding. We have not as of yet. My sense is that the committee, I recommend that the committee move forward with Mr. Libby's presentation of the FY21 budget. The unknowns will not be known, likely for 60 days or so. What the state funding level will be, we have no idea. What the impact of a possible delay in the state approval of a budget or a 112 budget, we don't know the impact of that. However, we are working hard within the confines of the current FY20 budget to ensure that we're doing all savings we possibly can. There is not a day, and sometimes there are days that are not ours, that don't go by, that Mr. Libby and I don't have a very specific conversation in regards to both the FY20 and FY21 budget, about what changes or possibilities we may have to make depending on the needs of the students and the staff in regards to this pandemic, what other additional elements they may need, or the lack of funding coming from the state. We have not heard anything specific. There is, and we have connected with the town regularly. So there is nothing at this point we can plan for, other than to make sure that we're frugal, we're thoughtful, and we're thinking ahead of wherever that may land. But what I would ask is though, all of that thinking is kind of going on alongside as we continually finalize the elements in the FY21 budget. So when Mr. Libby describes the FY21 budget, he may not talk about reducing this or looking at that. That conversation is very active in, in going on alongside of that, but is not part of this presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna share my screen here if this hopefully will work. Can we see that?
Yes.
A spreadsheet on there. Okay. So this budget's been developed in cooperation with town officials. Mr. Montori's been terrific in, in that regard, helping us develop this budget. We've worked with our principals, department heads, school administration to develop where we are in this, in our budget process for FY21. We've held workshops in January, and two public hearings in February and April. That's our school committee meetings. And this is where we are currently as we move into FY21. So as you can see, our salary operating in capital, outlay budgets, which is generally what we talk about when we talk about the school budget, represents a 2.94% increase in our request for FY21 over FY20. If we scroll down a bit here, some of our other costs that are associated with the school department, health insurance, our other types of insurance for our employees, retirement, get us to a 2.03% increase over this same budget for FY20. Of our budget, 70% is in salary. 60% of that salary budget is for teachers in our classrooms. So we're spending our money in the classroom where we get our bang for our buck and have our teachers interacting with students. Our operating budget is 28% of, of the school's budget. And capital outlay represents 2% of, of the budget. I didn't want to get too much into a whole nother presentation, as we've already been through this a few times. So I'm just trying to hit on a few highlights of changes that this budget includes. From a personnel perspective, the budget includes funding for an additional resource officer in conjunction with the Tewksbury Police Department. We envision the resource officer will be assigned to our elementary population. We already have folks stationed at our high school and our middle school. This resource officer will offer some support, additional support to our students in social and emotional areas, as well as overall school security. In the areas of technology, this budget includes funding for device maintenance and some investigation into monitoring systems that will allow for uninterrupted use and, and better internet capabilities for our students and staff, as well as investigating some solutions to lessen paper use, printing solutions, and more use of digital, digital communications. On the maintenance area, you're gonna see some security improvements happening in our schools over the summer, when students return in the fall, as well as some new STEM and maker spaces for our, for all of our school buildings. Those are really kind of the highlights that we've, we've incorporated into this budget. As Mr. Malone said, we have a lot of unknowns, but we feel that this is the, the best way to proceed right now in, in working with the, the town hall. They're in agreement that we, we should proceed as we had planned. So I have just noticed that in your packets, we're missing some pages that were supposed to be in your packets, some line item account level details, and some summaries by DESI function codes that I'm going to get emailed out to you tomorrow. So you can have those as part of, part of the presentation. And we'll make sure we get those posted online as well on our website, so that we have a complete picture of our, our budget down to the account level, and some summaries that folks can kind of easier, some easier to analyze information in the way of, of how the Department of Ed categorizes funding for schools and spending on, on our expenses. So if you have any questions, I would welcome them at this time and hopefully be able to address those for you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Libby. Mrs. Demos, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions on the papers that we have at this time. I look forward to seeing the emails with the changes tomorrow and then let you know, Dave, if I have any questions on that. But as far as what we have here, I'm good. Thank you so much for all the hard work.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman.
Quick one. The changes that you mentioned, I'm just looking at last month, just very high level. You've recommended the budget at 294, and then an overall budget at 2.03 increase. Where, where did the changes take place? Were there any internal changes taking place in the budget that you moved around for the resource, resource officer and some of the other things that you noted? Again, we don't have the details, obviously, in front of us, but, you know, since the, again, if you're keeping it fixed at 294, and, you know, the, the overall budget at a 2.03, was there anything moved inside of the budget that wasn't noted at, at the earlier budget meeting?
We had a couple of small adjustments for some contracts that got settled in, in March. Transportation contract was put out to bid and signed. It resulted in a slight increase of $30,000 or so over the course of the year for our regular ed transportation, and a slight increase to some tuition that was posted by the Valley Collaborative. We had estimated what their tuition costs were gonna be. And at the same time, we had realized some, we had some retirements and some resignations that folks were gonna replace. We generally see savings on our salaries when we have those types of events happen. So we've had some movement, such as that, within the budget. But the resource officer was a, was a, something we really wanted to pursue with the, with the police department. So we had kind of baked that into the budget from the very start.
Okay.
And that was always included in our, our original plan. I was just kind of highlighting the things that had changed from this year to next.
Right. So, quick question. If, if we go back, let's say, in the fall, and Collaborative come back and says, you know, we have a necessary need for additional BPE, and they come back and say, okay, we need a, you know, X amount of multiplier, how do we, how do we take that on as a, as a district? How does that impact our budget for FY21?
I, I think part of those, in, in your, that is the magical question you've just asked, Mr. Stadman.
No, I know. That's, that's one of the questions. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's obviously one of the things.
Part of it is looking at, for instance, the CARES Act money that just came in. And even though we don't know what the requirements will be for purchase, we don't know what kind of changes. I mean, town hall just opened up and they had to put in a lot in their budget to put in glass protection and other things of that nature. We don't know what we're gonna do for students. Even by staying ahead of it, by utilizing some of those that CARES Act money, we know that in remote learning, we've incurred more technology costs. That's, comes with it. We know that when we hand out devices to families, sometimes we're not always gonna get them back. So we know there's costs already there that we can target some of the CARES Act money when it's available to us. What we're patiently waiting for is what that guidance will be. Hopefully, what, what comes with the statewide guidance is additional state money and additional federal money. We're not planning on it. But, you know, some of those pieces, if that comes in and starts hitting the budget pieces, we've already talked about elements we have to look at. We have districts surrounding We have districts surrounding us who are doing reductions in force. We have districts around us who are doing salary freezes. So some of those pieces are live and possible.
Right. That's one of my questions. So that's a perfect segue. So if we're looking at a capital, you know, we only carved out, let's say, 600K of the capital money. Are we in danger of, you know, losing some of that money for, of that money? You know, are we shifting part of that now, reallocating? You know, again, I'm looking at an old.
Yeah. You're asking the absolute correct question. And if, if we have a reduction in money from the state, if that affects the FY20 budget, certainly capital is one of the first places you go. You look at all elements across the board. You look at proportionally. You engage the union in conversations. There is not a piece you wouldn't look at.
Right.
Your logic line, if that occurs, is exactly right.
Okay.
But right now, we're dealing with a lot of ifs and maybes and there are absolutely no certainties. And the information we have locally is good, but we can't ignore what you hear at the federal level. You can't ignore what you hear at the state level and you can't ignore what you're seeing in other cities and towns around us. So we have no specific indication that there will be an effect on the FY21 budget. However, I think it is certainly reasonable to continually think regularly about if that occurs, particularly at the state level, how we can address that within the FY20 budget, FY21 budget, excuse me.
No further questions, Chair.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Cutlass?
No, thank you, Mr. Libby. Great job. And thank you, Mr. Malone as well. Very good. Thank you.
And Wilson?
No, I have no comments or questions. Just thanks for the hard work and we'll patiently wait to see what the state does because that's going to tell us a lot.
Great. I agree with all those sentiments and I'm particularly happy to hear that we're going to dedicate a resource officer. I assume maybe at the Ryan, it sounds like. I don't think kids can have positive interaction with people of authority at an early enough age. So I think that's fantastic, you know, that we've made that a priority in this budget. So thank you, Mr. Libby, for your hard work. And I see we have a request to approve Mr. Libby's budget. What is the pleasure of the board at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY21 budget as laid out by Mr. Libby's presentation today.
And I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the FY21 budget Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote? Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye as well. That's a 4-1 vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Libby. Moving on to the Remote Learning Plan Update and Parent Survey Feedback. Is that Mr. Malone or Mrs. Regan?
Miss Regan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to actually present my screen so that where there are tables and graphs involved in this, let me, okay. Oh, there we go. Can you see that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The first thing I wanted to do was further define what Superintendent Malone was intimating was the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's four phases of the school closure. And just so that parents understand, we put this in our district newsletter and we certainly have followed the DESI guidelines as it pertains to remote learning and school closure. The first phase was defined as safety first. That was what we call that enrichment phase. In that phase, we used a good portion of two weeks plus to really allow families to acclimate and kiddos to be at home during the school closure. We did not know at the time how long it would last, but really it was a safety first. And the enrichment phase were optional learning activities that were delivered to families to assist them in the shift of staying at home and staying actively engaged in learning. The second phase was called, is a remote learning phase, which was titled "Deepen the Learning." And DESI's recommendation here was as families acclimated to now getting lessons provided online through multiple modes, to really focus on maintaining skills students had already learned and succeeded in prior to the school closing. So that was the deepen the learning phase. And what we waited to hear was obviously how long we knew the schools would continue to be closed and then DESI defining what that new phase would be. And that's the second phase of remote learning that we're currently in, which is titled "Further the Learning." In this phase, DESI identified key standards at every grade level often or core courses that students would need as prerequisite standards to be successful enough to move forward into the next course or grade level. So that's the further the learning phase that we're in now. We knew as we moved into that next phase of remote learning, we really needed to hear from parents because deepen the learning were skills kiddos already had. This was content they had already seen and we needed to know how are we doing so that we could further prepare for new content. So in the fourth phase is reentry. Clearly, that is unknown. It remains unclear as to how or when we'll be going back into our school buildings and proceeding with learning, teaching and learning is normal, but or the new normal as it's been called. So when we thought about the survey for parents for remote learning phase two and moving into phase three, you know, we really needed to validate at least some of the comments we were hearing from parents and get some concrete knowledge of how things were going. I provided for you the questions and the directions that we asked of families. We tried to keep it simple. We were very mindful that families could not labor through a very long and arduous survey. But you know, we really wanted to know about the children's, the student's schedule at home and how much time they were spending on remote learning, keeping in mind that the department had recommended up to a half a day of student learning. What the technology needs were. We had a robust, you know, borrowing program, but we did not get the level of student need that we thought we'd have or teacher need. So we reached out to find out were parents and students accessing technology in the way they needed to and certainly were we providing the right resources and teacher feedback. So as you saw, we also got some feedback on an early start, knowing that students have been out of the physical school building for a long time. We knew parents may want to weigh in on that and certainly we left room for open-ended comments. So I'm going to show you the results that we achieved in just six days. We had 546 parents or families participate in the survey. We have approximately 2,200 families in our Tewksbury Public Schools. So that's really quite impressive, a 25% return on a survey in a short time. Typically in a survey, you would be very happy to get 5% to 10% return. So we were pleased with 25%. You can see that almost half of the respondents were of our K through 4 group enough and then a nice chunk of parents and guardians responding from our middle grades. First thing was the routine. We were very curious to find out what was working for students because obviously school provides structure and routine. And we wanted to know, was that a successful method of remote learning at home? And we saw that, you know, 82-ish% of our students were doing their remote learning through either structured routine every day or flexible during the day. Some of our students also, our families responded that a flexible weekly schedule was best for them. And obviously, this really depended on the family's work at home demands as they told us later on in the comments. But some families also said it was really helpful when they had multiple students at home to really structure the week. What could we get done early so that they could focus on the more difficult content perhaps with older students later in the week? Older students who tended to like to wait to the last few days of the week to get things done. So time on learning, we saw that the majority of our students are doing remote learning for one to three hours of the day. And you can see that some students vary that response, you know, three to four hours or even more than four hours. Clearly, we know we have some disengaged students and that's concerning to us. And our support staff, including our administrators, our guidance, our school psychologists and our teachers are reaching out to those families regularly to try to engage those students in whatever way they can to keep them learning and participating through remote learning. So here we see our technology, device access and internet access. We had only seven families say they did not have regular access to the internet and/or to a device. Being that this was an anonymous survey, we don't know exactly who those families are. But again, those support staff and administrators and teachers that are reaching out to families that are not engaging are able to find out again if that technology is an issue. What we have here in the next couple of graphs are which one of the tools that we have provided were most useful. And you can see this varies and this will also vary per grade level. For example, Seesaw is an online tool that's used by our early childhood grade levels where the Google Classroom is most often used at our grades three and up. So you can see the variety of what has been useful. What it also tells us in the way that we ask this question is that it wasn't applicable. For example, pre-recorded video lessons, not applicable to my child. So that gives us some information that maybe they're not receiving enough video instruction that we can maybe strengthen for the remainder of remote learning. We've already touched upon the early start data. We saw 65-ish% of our parents were in favor of an earlier start. And then certainly we can see that many of our parents feel that the appropriate teacher feedback is effective in their child's remote learning. So then there were some themes. So you can imagine, reading through the 500-plus comments, you know, they were all over the place as far as what families need, but we definitely saw some strong themes and I bolded the first three themes that we read. And first and foremost, parents expressed appreciation and desire for more virtual meetings and virtual instruction with the teacher and with the entire class. So we know that by far that time that the student is able to see their teacher's face on screen live has been the most helpful to families. Again, parents really expressed a desire for more pre-recorded instructional videos from the teacher. And when they had them, there was just grand praise because it was very helpful, especially parents that were, you know, not necessarily experts in the content they were trying to deliver to their child. And when there weren't, at least to the parent's need, instructional video recorded lessons, they really exhibited a strong desire for more of that. And then, as I mentioned in one of the earlier tables, regular communication and feedback from the teacher is necessary. Parents told us often that the praise or the, even just the validation that the student was doing the lesson correctly was really a lot of help because, again, not all the parents were felt adequately prepared to help teach their student or their child the content in many of our courses. We heard often that this has been, and this isn't a surprise, and we certainly were trying to be sensitive to this, that parents are working essential jobs and working full-time from home and they were having difficulty managing schoolwork and even managing routines and behaviors of their own children. We heard equally there was too much work. There was not enough work. And certainly, there was a challenge in keeping students engaged, especially the older students. That was, I mean, it really pleased our administrative team as well as many of our teachers. There were so many comments of appreciation and praise for the realization of the difficult lift remote learning has been for our teachers and our administrators in our schools. So let me stop sharing my screen. Okay. Our goal is to implement another parent and student feedback survey when we conclude remote learning phase three. That's the remainder of the year. Our goal is also to tweak our annual staff development survey, where we reach out to our staff and find out what are their needs because this has been a huge learning curve for our staff. And I know that they are growing and, you know, improving their own talents in remote learning, but we need to know how can we help them further because clearly the potential for remote learning is there for next school year as well and we know that. So with that, that concludes the remote learning parent feedback survey from me. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have. Are we on?
Keith is muted.
Okay.
My bad. Thanks, Scott. Mrs. Demos, do you have any questions?
Brendan, one thing I was thinking about with the remote learning is when you pass Chromebooks for the students to have access online, were they given instructions that they'll be returned on the 15th? Or do we have availability through the licensing throughout the summer for kids to utilize those devices? Or what are we looking at as far as collecting those Chromebooks?
Well, clearly, we'd like to collect them from our seniors. But you know, we're still talking about that because we realize parents have expressed, and I didn't go through all the comments. Clearly, there are parents who would love some summer instruction, some summer help, some summer remote learning even. And we know that the potential for students continuing, at least with maintaining some skills, is there. We have students who will be participating in some level of extended year services with, due to their level of need. So right now, we're considering that it would be better to leave the devices in the hands of students if there's an opportunity for them to use them and continue the learning, whether it be summer reading or whatever that is. However, we know that not all families will be comfortable keeping the devices. So with that giant list of end-of-year tasks, that's one of our considerations. How do we allow families to bring those back if they don't need them in their possession for the summer?
I see. So is that something that maybe be covered in one of those surveys or a feedback? Would just individual outreach to the families that have taken them all?
I think both, Shannon. I think we're going to need to do both and because, again, we don't always hear from everybody, but we'll communicate in our next district newsletter some of that end-of-year planning. And that is, it's on our list.
Yeah, because I really feel strongly that if those kiddos that are, you know, K to 11 that are going to have the access to continue some sort of a learning, like you said, like through, whether it's reading online or doing some math online or kind of keeping up those skills and lessening the regression, I think that it serves us well to let them continue to use it if the families are comfortable with it.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you again.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stadman. Any questions?
Yeah, no, I thought that was a great presentation, Brenda. And yeah, to your point, having that amount of participation on a survey is definitely encouraging. And to Shannon's point, yeah, keeping the Chromebooks out there and if they're willing to learn and use the technology and keep it going and having that, you know, the ability to bridge during the summer, I think that's a fantastic idea to keep it out there in their hands. It'd be a good idea as well, so.
I agree.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Cutlass.
No questions, but thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Mrs. Regan, for that.
Great. And Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think it's, one, great that we have all that feedback and with the future uncertain, certainly it'll give us an opportunity to take lessons learned and opportunity for us to do better if, you know, God forbid, we have to do this again. But it's, obviously, it's unknown right now. So thank you for gathering that data because I just think it's going to make us better. I think it's been a good experience for everyone involved. Obviously, there's always people that are happy. There are always people that are unhappy. But I think in general, we've done a really good job reaching the Um, but I think in general, we've done a really good job reaching the masses and doing, uh, some really good things. And if we need to do it again, uh, we, we have a, we at least have a step in that that direction for the future.
Right. Thank you. And I'd just like to acknowledge and thank all the parents, obviously, uh, for getting us the information. And, um, you know, it's, it's difficult often at times, uh, in a leadership role where you, you know, you may be not getting all the information. So, um, I think it's fantastic the participation. Can't thank the parents enough. It certainly helps us, um, help their childrens and their families. So, um, kudos for everyone and that goes for the April vacation, uh, survey as well. So, um, you know, keep, keep letting us know what your thoughts are and how we can help the district. And we are certainly appreciative of that to all of our parents. So, um, with that, we're going to move on to new business and the student handbook changes. Uh, Mrs. Regan?
Yes, and and, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to move one of the, um, items out of order. And that would be to move number two, acceptable use policy ahead of the handbook memos. Because in fact, the acceptable use policy is a bullet in every one of the letters. So if we can look at that first, there is very, very few changes in the, um, in the acceptable use policy. And I think, given that we just talked about remote learning, I think you can understand that remote learning, that new term has hit our acceptable use policy. So the first change you'll see as you scroll through, and I'm scrolling through our packet to get to it as well, um, is that right there on page one, the new term remote learning, which is now very, uh, commonly used in the district, has been added to the last paragraph. And basically this reminds students that regardless of the mode of school, that all of the acceptable use policy, um, applies. The next change in our acceptable use policy as well is very brief. All of the headers have been reorganized and cleaned up. And then on page seven, you'll see a section that refers to virtual meetings because that is something that's, uh, new and sometimes common in our teaching and learning practice now. And then on pages eight and nine, we thought it was helpful for us students to see examples of and examples of not acceptable use. So we're hoping that you can, um, approve the new acceptable use policy for the 2021 school year.
Great. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any, uh, comments or questions. Uh, Mrs. Demos?
Um, I, I have nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Stadman?
Nothing at this time.
Great. Mr. Cutlass?
All set, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Wilson?
All set as well.
Great. So what is the pleasure of the board at this time regarding the technology acceptable use procedures?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the technology acceptable use policy as presented in our packets for the 2021 school year.
I'll second that.
Great. I have a motion and a second to approve the acceptable use policy. Uh, Mr. Wilson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Thank you. And like to go to Mrs. Regan now for the student handbook, uh, changes and memos.
Wonderful. And if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I can actually go through the very slight changes in all four of them. Would you like to vote on them all?
No, that would be great.
Great. The K PK through four joint elementary handbook has it. There's, there's a few bullets here, but there's actually very few changes. You'll see on the cover page, the new date, um, will, will be a change that they'll make as well as update Principal Tananovich's new name. And that occurs a couple of times throughout the document. On page 14, they, as they go through, and every year you go through a handbook, you find these little edits that maybe were missed before. Um, they need to update the dismissal time to 3:05 with from the previous 3:10. That occurs twice in the handbook, so they want to edit that. And in on page 16, you'll see that they're softening the word prohibited to the word discouraged. This, uh, applies to the dress code, flip flops, things like that. They'd like to include a section on page 17, when, uh, Food Service Director Dick Monkford, um, publishes the school lunch cost, the breakfast availability. They're gonna, uh, put that in there with your approval. And then, um, that's it. On page 29, there'll be an online signature page realizing that we need, uh, more of our documents to be online for families. They've added that. If you look at the John F. Ryan, um, 2021 handbook updates, they're very simple. The, uh, approved district calendar will be, uh, link to the approved district calendar will be, um, implanted in there as well as a link to the new updated acceptable use policy and the new as you approve tonight, the chain of command. The John W. Win Middle School, yeah, student handbook for 2021, uh, similar to the Ryan will include the approved district calendar, the updated name of any new faculty and staff to be determined, updated acceptable use policy you just approved, and the title page and signature page for the new acceptable use policy will be updated. And then the high school, um, as well as similar to the Win and the Ryan will include the district calendar, new names of faculty and staff, including the high school principal, which right now will be to be determined, the updated acceptable use policy, the updated signature page. Um, the letter from the principal will remain blank until we bring on the new high school principal and they'll look for any typos to fix. But, you know, the, all of the principals decided there were no real changes needing to be made. So other than updated links, they're in very good shape.
All right. Does anyone have any, uh, questions? I'll start with Mrs. Demos regarding any of the student handbooks.
Um, my only question is regarding the change of language, um, in the elementary from the prohibited to discouraged. You know, it just kind of shit, gives me shivers down my spine when I think of those flip flops going on the playground come the spring, you know? Um, what does this do as far as opening us to any sort of liability where we are no longer prohibiting it, we're discouraging it, you know? I wondered what the thought behind the change in the language is.
Yeah, it was really, um, with the younger students, obviously their choice in clothing is, um, is often, you know, uh, obviously the choice the parents making with them, right? So, um, the principals were hoping that the language could feel less punitive, but more directive, here's what we'd like things to, like you to look like, with more of an explanation as why, uh, particular items of clothing may be unsafe. So, you know, there's, I, I think I would just say, Shannon, and you've been a third grade teacher for a long, you were a third grade teacher for a long time. And when we say it's prohibited, now what are we forced to do when a student comes in and flip flops, right? We're gonna, we're gonna call the parent, we're gonna educate the student why it might not be the best choice. But we're certainly not applying a punitive approach. So they thought the word discouraged matched the approach they're using.
Okay. They'll still be, yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, Mr. Stadman?
No questions.
Mr. Cutlass?
All set, Mr. Chair.
Great. Mr. Wilson?
All set.
Great. And I don't have any questions as well. What is the pleasure of the board at this time?
I'd like, uh, to make a motion to accept, uh, the policy changes as Brenda laid out um, for all, I believe it was all four schools, right? Let's see, uh.
Yep.
Yep. All four, the Ryan, the Win, the High School.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the 2020, 2021 student handbook changes for the K through four elementary school, John Ryan Elementary School, John Win Middle School, and the Tewksbury Memorial High School. Mrs. Demos, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So those handbooks are adopted. Uh, we already took the acceptable use policy. And that brings us to number three, which I think we might have to maybe table or take a look at with the, uh, movement of the start of the school calendar, Mrs. Regan, is that correct?
Yes, I respectfully request that we save the register periods for the June 10th meeting. We had need to recalculate now all of those quarters with the change in the start of the school year.
Okay, great. So we'll have that on for an agenda item for the June 10th meeting.
So we'll bring the full calendar as well, uh, or at least our plan is to bring the full calendar with the end of school year, um, recommendation, graduation, and then all of the professional development days as well.
Great. Thank you very much. And, uh, Brian, if he's, uh, still there, I'll give him one more shout out before we go to matters of interest. In case someone did call in, Brian? Okay, great. Thank you very much, sir. So I'm going to move on to school committee matters of interest. And I'll start with Mrs. Demos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge the class of 2020 where we've, that's been the theme of the evening. Um, this definitely wasn't the way they imagined their senior year would end, but they persevered and they showed that they are truly Tewksbury tough. Um, moving forward, I want to remind them to always keep their heads up high and reach for the stars. And always remember who my favorite Walt Disney always told them, if you can dream it, you can do it. So congratulations to all the class of 2020. I wish them all the best in their future endeavors, whatever that may be. That's all I have for this evening.
Great. Well said. Thank you, Mrs. Demos. Mr. Stadman?
Yeah, along with that, um, you know, we've been bringing these guys along, you know, congratulating them. And although they're not going to get a traditional, uh, walking, this is one obviously that they will never forget. Um, hopefully we won't be doing this again with, uh, 2021. Um, and, um, that's all I have to say about that.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Mr. Cutlass?
All set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I'll be brief, um, but, you know, Keith, you made the comment earlier and Shannon just kind of echoed similar thoughts on, um, the class of 2020 and keeping their heads high and, and, uh, thinking about the things that they can do and remaining positive about, uh, a difficult situation. And I think that that's all we can do. And I think the leadership of the schools has taken that approach and shown them that that's what you do, even though it's been really difficult. Um, it's been a really long stretch and I think people are, you know, becoming stressed and frustrated. And, um, I think everyone just needs to stay as positive as they can, keep their heads up. And, uh, this too will pass and, uh, great things are going to happen for all of them. And they'll go on to do such, such wonderful things that, um, you know, they'll, they'll be time to celebrate. Um, it just isn't right now. So congratulations to all of them. And thank you again to Chris and team for everything that you guys have done because this has been, uh, this has been a difficult time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Tough act to follow there. Um, obviously my congratulations to, uh, all of our 2020 students. Um, I hope, you know, everyone can find some time to, you know, enjoy whatever normal is right now for them. Um, certainly going into the end of the school year isn't a traditional thing going into the summer. Um, you know, find things, find opportunities to do things that make you happy. As, uh, Mr. Wilson said, this too will pass. Um, so, um, learn from it, um, be stronger for it. And, um, you know, remember wherever you end up in life, um, we all have the power to make a difference for someone else, so. Um, with that being said, we have the future school committee and subcommittee meetings and dates as follows. Uh, next meeting will be June 10th, the regularly scheduled meeting, uh, 2020. And the annual town meeting, which is scheduled for June 22nd, 2020, and the special town meeting on June 24th. Does anyone have any future agenda items other than the ones we discussed with, uh, uh, Ms. Regan? Mrs. Demos, do you have anything for the agenda?
No, I'm good.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Stadman?
No, sir.
Mr. Cutlass?
No, no, thanks.
Nothing at this time.
Great. Thank you. And for all you listening and tuning in on TV, um, if you do have anything that you would like to get on the agenda or would like for us to look at or speak about, uh, you can contact myself or any one of my colleagues here on the school committee or the superintendent or assistant superintendent or even the business manager for that matter. So, um, with that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. How do you vote, Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
And Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Great. Thank you all very much and have a pleasant evening.